Has anybody called in? We have no comments. Public comment.
This is the kind of meeting.
All right. Well, welcome everyone to our planning commission meeting tonight. We are going to start with a word of prayer from Member Wilson and then please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we bear his before we were grateful for the opportunity we have to serve in the capacities which we do. We're grateful for those who are willing to serve. We ask a blessing as this meeting begins that we might have the wisdom and understanding of how to deal with the issues that are brought to our attention and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ tonight.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda? So moved. Check. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any conflicts of interest to record? None? If not, we'll go into a time of public comment. Until moments ago, there was nobody here, so we will give an opportunity for public comment. Does anybody want to comment on anything during this time?
I don't know.
She's the applicant. Yeah, but as long as you're here, I figured you may want to mention something in public comment. In the beginning of our meetings, we have an opportunity for the public to just comment about anything unrelated to anything that's on the agenda. So your issue is actually a public hearing tonight, so we would open that up for official public comment, but we always open up a generic public comment. So if no one has any comment, no public comment for tonight, then we'll move on to item number six on our agenda. Discussion decision on the Reese Future Land Use Map Amendment.
So Kendra Reese is applying. So Kendra Reese is applying to amend the future land use map and rezone from agricultural and A20 to the back half. Okay, the front is agricultural and A20. And then the back half is MU 160 and natural resources and recreation. There you can see. It's not the half, but... So she'd like to amend the zoning to RR1. And she wants to amend the zoning so she can separate her single-family home from her mink farm, allowing her to finance her home separately from the farm, and there is no anticipated development for the property. The proposed amendment is in harmony with existing land uses in the area. As you can see on the zoning map, the Reese Ranch PRUD subdivision is directly east of the property, and it will not adversely impact the adjacent properties due to these findings. Planning staff recommends approval of both the future land use map amendment and... Yeah, so there's two... You guys have to make two separate motions. So first for the future land use map amendment.
So the first thing before us is the question of amending the future land use map to reflect RR1, and then the second part of that would be a formal rezone request. So the whole thing is 20 acres? I'm sorry, I'll go around the room. I just wanted to clarify. 20 acres, how big is the piece? Oh, I guess we'll get to it when we get to zoning.
The mink farm is five acres.
Mink farm is five of the 20?
And the whole property is 20, 25, 4 acres.
Okay.
But one parcel.
Right. Do you guys remember the meeting we had about mink farms and RR1?
That was a loud initiation.
That was, wasn't it? Just a side note, good thing we didn't take that.
That wasn't there.
There was about 300 people there in the middle school and...
A big misunderstanding.
Big misunderstanding. So just for my own clarity, mink farms are still in allowable use in... Haley, sorry. Mink farms are still in allowable use in RR1. We didn't take it out.
It'd have been a major fight.
Yeah, no, I just think it's ironic because we thought to ourselves, who... Where would you ever have a mink farm in RR1's zone? Here it is, years later.
We're creating it.
So my only question is that one of the findings is that the amendment is in harmony with the future land use map or planning efforts, but the future land use map is still the same as what it is.
So if you guys were to approve the future land use map, then it would be...
That's for the rezone.
Yeah, that's for the rezone. So that would come after.
So you're suggesting not using finding one?
Yeah, because technically I don't feel like it is in harmony because the future land use map shows ag and natural resources and rec.
Right, so you have two applications before you. The first is the future land use map amendment.
Yeah.
If you vote for that, then the zoning staff report is correct and it would be considered.
But on item number two, right, not item number one?
The future land use map amendment is in harmony...
Is in harmony with future land use goals and objectives. It doesn't show RR1 there? So are you saying that RR1 is in harmony with future land use goals and objectives?
I'm saying not according to the future land use map.
If you were to approve the future land use map, would go on to the rezone application, and then that's when...
I guess it's semantics.
Or if you didn't approve the future land use map, we wouldn't go to the rezone application.
Well, no, we're talking about the first application, the future land use map. The future land use map amendment is not in harmony with the future land use.
But then...
Planning effort. I mean, it's...
The future land was changed in that area, wasn't it, before? Is that not considered part with the Round Valley and all that through that whole area? Are we separate?
No, this one's separate.
It's separate from...
It's still a... The future land... That's why they're...
The future land was changed in Round Valley.
You guys have approved an RR1 area next, so...
That's in harmony with the existing land uses, yes.
Is it possible what the staff means is on page 15, D... Right after D2, it says, "It is anticipated that the proposed zoning map amendment will meet these purposes and generally be in harmony with the general plan. The impact on adjacent properties will be negligible."
I agree.
Is that... Maybe that's what it means? That's what finding number one means?
Or maybe just word it better.
I'm just asking.
I'm just being nitpicky, mostly because, like, some of the recent decisions that we've made have been because they don't match the land use or the future land use map.
Right.
And technically, this one does not either in the space that we're talking about. East, yes. Was that a PRUD?
Reese, yes.
That's a PRUD?
Yes.
It's that old.
Just maybe remove finding one. The other findings are appropriate.
I'd say, yeah.
Yeah.
That was my only question.
Can you zoom out? Oh, you probably don't... Do you have the future land use map up? I didn't get it.
agricultural land use and a little bit in the natural resources of our place.
I just want to... I'm just looking at the general plan, just to... Like Haley was talking about, we've got to make sure that it is consistent with the vision of the future land use map or in the general plan as well.
In the Round Valley general... Well, the area plan is very nondescript.
Yeah. Isn't it an amendment as well?
It recommends residential zoning in the area, is all it says, so...
Have you had any public comment on it at all?
I just have...
Anyone here for the applicant first? Or are you guys have any more questions for staff? Let's go to the applicant, and then we'll go into a public hearing and see if anybody wants to say anything. Maybe someone will call in. It's all good. Do you guys...
Are they an A, B, or C?
The appendix? I don't know. Is Round Valley an appendix to the general plan?
Yes.
Do you know what appendix is?
A. I think try A if the other ones...
You don't have to say anything, but I mean, is there anything you want to...
If you would, please, yes, so we can record you. Thank you.
So I'm Kendra Reese, and I own the property. And the purpose of this is right now it's A20, so whenever I do any farm financing, the whole A20 is in the bones. And I am eventually not going to be in the farm business. I'm going to just live in my house, and I want to be able to break off my home from the farm loans. And so right now I can't, and my mortgage company will finance like my home in 20 acres. So that's really the purpose. I kind of like the way it is up there. I don't want to change anything, but I know eventually these children of mine may change their mind after I'm gone, so anyway. But that's down the road. So right now, there's just the mink ranch and then my home. In the future of mink business, who knows? We're still waiting on that, so...
If you want any, we'll give you the...
Yeah. And that's basically what I'm after, so... And I talked to the landowner, Scott Reese, who's owns the ground, and he said, "Do what you want." So...
Just curious, how many are in the RR1 zone that's just to the east? How many homes are in that?
Like 10? I think there's 10 lots there.
10 lots?
Yeah. And I think all but two of them are... Got a home on them on those lots, so...
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks.
And these are my two cents. They're my backup.
Okay, so you guys have any discussion on this? If not...
My... I don't have any concerns with the rezone. I guess this is just a general about rezoning steep ground, as the planning commission have. It's over 25 percent.
Do you want to have another discussion after we make a motion on this one, or should we just have it all down?
After you.
It doesn't matter. I mean, I...
As soon as you change the future land, then it's done.
It's done.
So now's the time to hash anything out before you change the future land.
I mean, I don't have...
But you could rezone it to RR1. It's still, whether it's buildable, then plays into effect.
Right now, under our code, it's not buildable. If you had PRUDs and whatnot, it could be, but...
But I mean, you could still have it zoned to RR1, and it's not going to be buildable because of the limitations. So whether it's RR1 or A20, she's...
Right. No, I understand. Because we don't have a PRUD ordinance. If we did, it could take that density and move it around.
Yeah, it could move it around, you know.
We don't have one, yes.
But right now, under the RR1 zone, she's... It's one acre lots, basically, but...
On buildable ground.
On buildable ground, so I don't see where there's a conflict or a problem.
Anything else?
Just a particular... I'm curious... Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, did that answer your question?
Yep, yep.
I was just curious. I mean, once we approve this and it gets sent to council, if they approve it, how many lots do you... I guess this is directed at the staff more. How many lots do you see a potential for there in all reality?
Well, wouldn't it be four at the max of it? Isn't RR1 five acres?
One acre.
One acre.
What's our...
15 acres there, but it looks like...
I'd say three at the most.
You'd have more than that below the front of her house if she ever wanted to. Time they did away with the mink farm, because she was saying five acres, the mink farm. Plus, there's still... Does it go down to the road, Kendra?
No, just... There's an access road kind of between me and the mink farm.
Yeah, that goes up to the pit.
Yeah, but that's... There's nothing... Like, it doesn't come down to the interstate.
Right. You go to that road, though, that goes up to the pit, basically.
What's on the other side?
So I mean, she'd be able to put a few homes in front of hers and behind it, but probably starting to get a little bit harder because of the percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, once you see the slope image, you can kind of say that's all...
But the other thing, I mean, it's wells and septic up there, isn't it? So that plays into your cards also. The one acre is not going to work, so that makes a limitation also.
At least eight and a half, probably closer to two.
Yeah, you'd probably be closer to two.
So if you... Can I ask a question? So if you go to... It's like, if it's RR1, and I ever did do that, can't you just get, you know, break it into 200 lots as long as you... Okay, as I say, you can go bigger, you just can't get smaller. Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
What's her frontage on the road, Lance?
Frontage is...
So that area below the house is, you know, 2.4 acres, maybe. And then... It's probably just 500 feet.
So you need 330, right, for RR1?
200.
Oh, is it 200? Okay.
But if they ever did anything, they'd have to create the frontage in the RR1.
The second access, too.
All that, you know, would come in to create another access. They'd have to create frontage off of roads to make the... Give them the 200 feet to make code. So I mean, there'd be some work involved to ever try to put homes in there.
Any other thoughts? No? Ready for motion?
Mr. Chair, I move forward a positive recommendation to County Council for the Reese Future Land Use Amendment, application number...
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Oh, public hearing.
Can we make a motion to go to public hearing? So moved.
So moved.
Second.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now in public hearing for this item. No public comment? Motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we're out of public hearing for this legislative item. Now we'll take a motion.
Are we taking up number one?
Yeah. I move forward a positive recommendation to the County Council for the Reese Future Land Use Amendment, application number 20.025, changing the designation from agricultural and natural resource and recreation to rural residential based on the findings listed in the staff report dated May 28, 2020, with the exception of removing finding number one.
Second.
Okay. Got it, Bailey?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes? It's complicated, isn't it? Sounds like it. Okay, item number seven then is the rezone. Do we need any discussion on that?
Yeah. Pretty well did it.
Just a public hearing.
Yeah. Okay, make a motion.
So moved.
Okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, now we're in public hearing for item number seven. Any comments? No? Okay, take a motion to go out.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we're now out of public hearing for item number seven. Onto decision for the rezone for the same...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we recommend a positive... I move to approve... We forward a positive recommendation to the County Council for the Reese Rezone Map Amendment, application number 20.026, changing the zoning district from A20 and MU 160 to RR1, based on the findings listed in the staff report dated May 28, 2020.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks for coming in. You can stay, you don't have to go. Okay, onto item number eight. 1, 2, 3, 4. We're all here for 20,000. Who was here for the North American Industrial Classification System?
At the end, yeah.
You're here at the end, NAICS?
I didn't get to see all seven.
How could I forget that? Were you here for part of that, Haley?
Yeah.
If they haven't seen it, I'd rather recommend like...
Two years.
...there's only like 30,000.
Yeah, no, there was only 20,000. Wasn't that bad?
Words.
No, 20,000 different potential uses. Each business has its own specific use. One example would be the difference between a business that sells cocoa versus a business that sells cacao. Do you remember? They're two very different things.
It was a nightmare.
And we would roll that up into you can sell stuff, retail business. I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I've already talked to staff about this, so we just have a discussion about this, right? But the idea is, I'm just kind of... I'll just talk, whatever. We did that, and for those that weren't here from the beginning, the County Council asked us essentially to look at our existing zones, which were like neighborhood commercial, commercial highway... What's industrial, commercial highway? It was commercial highway.
It was light manufacturing.
Was it?
Wasn't this CD district all that went... Covered all that?
No, that was Johnson's ground.
Right. And then there was commercial buffer.
Yeah, there was.
Commercial highway. So there was a bunch of commercial zones with some generic uses. And the County Council wanted to expand. I think the motivation was to bring more money into the county by advertising to the world that Morton County was open to business for much more than just what was on our...
Well, they wanted to make it easier for someone to come in and be able to do what they wanted was their intent.
So it was about two years. For about two years, we went through this whole process, and then we got to the end of it, and essentially, we reduced 20,000 down to 100?
A few hundred.
A few hundred, maybe? And we generalized it, so, you know, instead of it being cocoa and cacao, it was retail, I think. You know, that kind of stuff. We really condensed it. But we painstakingly went through each and every single code to figure out whether or not it was applicable to Morton County, and we would cross them out and go back and forth, et cetera. And then Lance got hired, and we were just about to... I'm not blaming you, I'm just setting the context for the night. So right before we... When we came to the end of this project and we had a deliverable, for whatever reason, we were under the assumption, I was too, we were all under the assumption that we were going to replace the old code, the old zones with the new zones. And then Lance enlightened us and said, "Well, you can't. You'd have to rezone those properties." So essentially, now what we have is we have the old zones, we have the new zones, and so we just have a bunch of zones. And that's where we're at today. And we didn't really think about it until ArmorMax. And when ArmorMax came in, we... I was automatically going to the new zone in my mind, thinking, "Well, what did we say were the allowable uses in that zone?" But it was still zoned under the old zone, and clearly armored car manufacturing was on nobody's list, unless we kept all 20,000 NICS codes. I'm sure it would have been in there, but that was one example of it's hard to predict what people really want to do. So it was... In that case, it was good that it was kind of general, right? It was just a light manufacturing type use. So anyway, that's kind of what led us up to this discussion, right? So now you... Lance's staff wants to... For us to take a look at those zones just to see if they still make sense. Is that accurate? Some of the details would be, should one item be a conditional use versus primitive use, et cetera? We don't have that much to do. So my thoughts are, before we even have discussion, my thoughts are, like I mentioned to you, if this was... If we wrote the zone in the 80s and the 90s came around and someone came to us with a DVD store application, we... Our old zone wouldn't have, you know, wouldn't have included that, so we wouldn't know where to put it. So it's not a bad idea to take a look at them and just do a refresh, just to see if there's anything in there that fits or doesn't fit. I was a... My first reaction when we first started to talk about it was it just started twitching because we had, like I said, two years of painstakingly going through that. I don't think that's what you're asking. I think you're asking for a ref... Not the 600 pages that we were initially discussing. I just wanted to... I think this has been in place for a couple of years, and it's time to just look at it again and, you know, kind of came up with the ArmorMax rezone. Are the zones what we really want them to say? We've had a little time, we've had a little distance. Are these the zones, the commercial zones we want? Are there any tweaks we would like to make to their purpose? And then we'd like to go through the use table, but I mean, it's several pages, but it's not 600, and go through those uses and see if they make sense. And so I would like to just walk through all these commercial zones, read the purpose section for each one of them. I would also like to talk about conditional uses. We have a lot of conditional uses in here. Are they all... And then we do the use table, and that's where we look at, is a conditional use good or bad or not? Right off the bat, and just to give you an example of the time of thinking I'm looking at, one of the first uses is banquet halls with catering staff. So if a banquet, and can they cater on that? That is a conditional use in the commercial shopping district. But the commercial shopping district is... Its intent and purpose is to provide areas in appropriate locations where a combination of businesses, commercial, entertainment, and related activities may be established, maintained, and protected. How would a... Why does a banquet hall need an additional review? And the idea of where I'm coming from is just that to be friendly to businesses, we need to reduce the bureaucracy. And so having them do a conditional use when we have design standards, as the use is what is consistent with that zone, it seems like an extra... it seems like an extra step that they would have to take, it introduces a lot of questions, and so it kind of discourages businesses, or costs more for them to establish. And so, we're just trying to fine tune this, and I think if, what staff would like to do is just go through the purposes tonight of these districts, and then get your direction on where you want to go from there. Maybe that's enough review, and, you know, I'm just getting a little over ahead of myself, and we don't need to do this, but I wanted to bring that question up to you guys.
Mr. Chairman, a question. Do you think we should keep all these zones, or should we start condens, putting, merging some together?
I think, as I read through them, and, and this is, I didn't understand fully when I started what had gone on and, and what the intent was. So, I, as I read them, I think they're all fine, I think they establish certain criteria and limitations. There may be, I would say there's a lot for the rural and the amount of commercial that Morgan County has. I don't, I don't know that we need all these zones, but at the same time, as I read them, I think, well, that's, that's okay. And it gives us the flexibility to say, well, I don't want commercial highway there that allows a lot of things, but, but neighborhood commercial is good, because that, then it's, it's going to reduce the uses and its impact to, say, an adjacent neighborhood. So, I, I think having all these tools in the box, so to speak, is, is a good way to go. It could be fine tuned, maybe, or, or maybe not.
I guess the question is, a lot of the new zones, well, the ground now, the existing zones are the old zones.
Correct.
For the most part.
Except for town center, yeah.
Except for town center. Why would a landowner want to rezone to one of these new zones, perhaps with limited uses? And they probably want to just keep the old zone.
They probably, the existing, and, and that's, you know, Gary alluded to the fact that when I started, I thought, we, we cannot come in and just, we would have to go through a rezone process and contact the property owners, see if they're all on board, and then to a thousand foot radius, hold, hold the public hearing at the planning commission, and hold the public hearing with the county council. And we would have to go through that process to change anything. And, and, and that would be the only way I understand you can rezon the property. But, what you guys were, I missed that you wanted to get rid of the old zones, I just thought we'd, we'd do it as time passed. So I pull up the future land use map, we have this commercial area down here, that's, this is Old Highway just to the north, south of Rollins Ranch and north of A4, and this is currently the Holly Pit, which are taking a lot of rock out right, and dirt out right now. But someday, we have, in our future land use map, we've said we want this to be commercial. Well, we haven't said what commercial zone we would want it to be in. So if they brought in a user that's, you know, a technical campus or an office building type thing, and, and design and scale would be other issues that we've discussed, but just from a strictly use standpoint, we might direct them and say, well, go for our technical and professional campus district. That's what we want to see here. Or, or one of the other more specific zones. That way we give them what they want, and we get some control. So we would use these zones as new, as new properties came in, but we wouldn't necessarily go back and tell Browning, hey, yeah, you're a business park, and, let me zoom, good zoning. We don't need to change from light manufacturing for you guys, we're not going to, I, I wouldn't think we'd go back to Browning and say, hey, we, we want you to change to technical and professional campus. I don't see that there'd be a great gain in that exercise. Still on a lot of use, still going forward, still, you know, a great community asset, so we wouldn't touch that. But on the new properties that came in, as I pointed out, here south of Old Highway, that would be something we'd want to look at, and maybe limit, maybe half of that is a technical, professional, and there is a neighborhood shopping area, or, or just a shopping district. So, all, all these tools give us some variation that we can work with as new properties come in.
So is that the future one, or is that the one now?
This is the zoning, this is the current zoning, and then this is the future land use.
And you say the red?
It's commercial.
It just says general commercial, it's just commercial, it's not, we talked about manufacturing there at one time.
Well.
Well, but we don't even.
By the free one.
The future land use map says that we want to see commercial uses there.
Of some sort.
So don't, can't we decide what commercial uses we want there? Why can't, couldn't we have like, commercial, and then underneath say, commercial could be highway, general, neighborhood?
It does.
It does, that's, that's what it says to me. The future land use map says that this area, we want it to be commercial uses, very high level. And then they would come in and let the property owner and the market decide which one of those commercial uses they want to specifically get to. Whether they want a professional campus, or whether they want a highway commercial, or something like that.
Why not, shouldn't all the commercial, on the future land use map, just be general commercial and not specific?
It just says, yeah, it is, it just says commercial right now.
No, but the other commercial.
So, so taking back a step, the, the, the future land use map and the general plan are just at the very, their high level. And so I would say any type, if this area, this red area, is commercial uses. Any one of these commercial zones would be applicable.
Can you pull back so I can see more? I'm just saying, why aren't the?
This area up here is a business park, any, any one of these zones that implements a business park, obviously the business park zone, but you could also say, you know, mountain green commercial, or technical professional, or you could have an area that's in there that's commercial shopping.
But why not just have that as a commercial on the future land use map, and not so specific to business?
Because I think that's why we wrote business park, because we were thinking we were getting rid of all those hotchpotch of commercial zones.
Right, but should, should all our commercial on the future land use map just say commercial, and not be so specific as to what kind of commercial?
Well, that'd be a community decision. Yeah, I think that's a different, that's a discussion for our general plan. The general plan did not go that direction. The general plan said, no, this area we want to preserve for business parks. We don't want to be taken up with all, you know, shopping district. We want that area to be business park.
But yet we rezoned the future land use map there by ArmorMax, we didn't pick.
You didn't rezon, you changed the future land use. It's not a zone, it's a land use. And you put.
We did.
You put business park and commercial. And so that business park.
We left the light manufacturing in the back.
It should have been light manufacturing.
And we rezoned the front.
Yeah. And the zoning, that's the zoning.
Right, it didn't fit the future land use, as what we thought should be there.
Right, and in hindsight, now, it, it makes sense, because we, we changed the future land use map to match those new zones that are there. Right. And after three years, I finally understood that. I did not realize that's what you guys intended to do. We could initiate that rezon. And we could, we could come in and come into these property owners.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, the Browning example to me is, is a good one. Why would we go rezon Browning? Browning's fine, it's working, it's good. Because we were led to believe that once we approved these zones, they would just become these new zones.
And that's what I'm saying, just make it on the future land use map just commercial, don't get so specific, because we didn't really follow it.
Can I, can I say to them, confuse it, what the heck is going on right now?
Okay, so.
I'm trying to hang on.
And I'm glad you said, said that, so, I mean, when we go to planning, land use planning, backing up a little bit, a community says, they look at an area, and we're picking on mountain green because it's got the most different colors. They look at an area, and, and with the future land use and the general plan, they say, we want to see, you know, these things happening in our community, this type of residential, this type of commercial.
Commercial stuff over here.
It's high level, but it's also a little bit specific, we, we want.
What do you mean by high level?
High level meaning that there's not a lot of detail to it.
Agricultural.
At 20,000 feet of the ground.
Okay.
The future land use map says commercial, it doesn't give us 12 different commercial zones. That's the implementation, and that's the zoning, that's the second step.
It just says we don't want agricultural residential.
We want commercial.
Okay.
And, and it makes it an easier decision, is why we do that. We can, we can all agree that, yeah, we want that area between Old Highway and the interstate to be commercial. We also.
Moving forward.
We also have. We also have existing zoning to deal with, people are, have certain entitlements right now. And, and Morgan County is a conservative, property rights oriented community, and it, it, we don't want to go in and change that just because, we, we want to have a good reason if we're going to do that. And so, you, you kind of get that conflict of, long term, we want to see these types of things, but we're, but we also want to preserve their existing zoning. And the Yaggy H ArmorMax rezone is a good example of that. The zoning was light manufacturing. The discussions in 2017 said, well, we want to see that business park someday, but he already had a, a higher intensity zoning. Does that help at all?
So, we decided that we wanted that area to be a business park. He wanted it to be light manufacturing.
Oh, it already was light manufacturing.
It was light manufacturing.
In hindsight, I don't know why we changed it, they already had light manufacturing. We could say we want to see business park there in the future goals, but ultimately he had the, the higher intensity use. Again, because we thought those zones were going to go away, and they're business park. And they could have, if you'd gone through that whole rezon process, but that would have been thousands of acres, changing businesses, that would have been a lot of work, and based on the fur experience, I didn't think we wanted to do it. But that's, that's why the future land use map says what it says.
It goes back also to that, I can't remember who it is, but the ones that's wanting to develop the gravel pit, we had all the issues on.
The town center, the CW land?
Is that what it was, below the middle school?
Yeah.
I remember they come in, and that's, we want that to be, it's a commercial thing, and I can't remember the numbers now, but it was like, way high of residential to the commercial. So I mean, that's what we went through, is to designate.
The town center.
What we wanted.
It's the same thing, a business park. It's a really good thing.
The commercial versus residential, and then they can do what they want in it.
So we, we dictated number one, at the higher level, not a lot of detail, town center. They came in and said, you mean town center with all this residential? And we kicked it back to them and said, no, 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 we don't mean that much residential. We want a mix, but not that much. And they're coming back in soon.
What percent?
I don't know yet.
Well, we, we, on that one, we told them a percentage, didn't we?
I thought it was like.
It was, we had a pending ordinance, so, we died, what did we identify in the ordinance? Thirty-five percent is what we ended up adopting.
Yeah. Thirty-five percent had to be designated for commercial. Because they were way high for residential.
Without going back and ratifying all that with the existing landowners, they're entitled to the original zoning, is what I hear you saying.
So where CW land was coming in and changing it from the ag mining to.
Town center.
Town center, to a commercial zone, we gave specifics, and, and they're working on it.
But if I hear what you're saying, Lance, all this that we've done is a polite suggestion to an owner that's already entitled to the previous zoning.
In some cases, yes, but like, the, the gravel pit's a good example of where we gave direction, and when they came in and asked for what we wanted, we were able to tell them. And that's, that's a great example of how this should work. We didn't change the mining, we didn't change their use at, at the time, but when they came in to change it, we said, all right, we want you to conform through our general plan and use one of these zones to do your.
So, so really, we couldn't make them rezon until they came in to change something, and then we could say, actually, the future land use map says this, you need to rezon.
That's traditionally how it's done. Some communities do get aggressive and go say, I don't care what you want, I want to change it now, and we need to change it. But that's rare, and you get into a lot of complications there.
So can I go back to what is the original question here today?
So the original question for me is, are these the right zones? Do we like how they read? Do we need to consolidate?
Zoning, not future land use.
We're talking zones, right? Zones, zones, so land use is just high level, very general, that it's not too high level. It's general, it's not going to get into a specific list of uses, but it's going to give you some minor direction. The zoning is where we implement and get really specific. You have to have this much acreage, your building has to have these type of designs, and these are the uses that are allowed.
Which is the discussion right now.
Which is where we want to sit right now. So what do you, what do you want us to do? Do you want to, do you want us to specifically go through it, or do you want to make recommendations? I'm happy to do whatever you guys would like to do, I would like to see if this is something you want to look at. I think we ought to read through the purposes of each of the zones, and kind of understand that. I gave you the example of the banquet halls, where there's opportunity, I think, to, to make our code a little bit clearer and less bureaucratic.
I have another question. So, these commercial and industrial districts, are they all the new ones that were decided on the most recent time, or this is mixed with what we had with what we wanted?
We have all of them.
We have both on there.
So this is a mix of what?
The old and new.
Okay, so can I, can we go through which ones are old and which ones are new? Commercial buffer district?
Old.
Neighborhood commercial?
Old.
Town center is new. Commercial shopping?
Old.
Highway?
Old.
General?
Old.
Business park?
New.
Technical?
New.
Mountain green commercial?
New.
Peterson?
New.
Light manufacturing? And industrial?
So, there's nothing we can do, we have more codes than we have, more zones than we had before. Your, what you're asking us is, it's time to, just to look at all those again to make sure they're still relevant, and make some, make any necessary suggestions. And the example you're using is banquet halls is a C2, requires a conditional use for it, C1. To my point, who cares? If they have design standards, why make them go through the extra steps and meetings of those conditions? Even if, even if the staff love it. So, to, to, to the planning commission, I, I've heard you say a couple of times you would like us to read the zones just so we're clear with the intent for the purpose. I think, I think, but we're here and talking about it, I think. So, so for the planning commission, I'll just give you my opinion, I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we should go through all the uses tonight, because I feel like we, we did that when we first created those zones. I would like to see your recommended changes, and then we can look at those changes, and we can, you know, we can kind of look at it as we look at your changes. Tell us what, what you think from a planning perspective, what, what we might want to change, and then, then we'll, then we can proceed with public hearing, the discussion, or whatever. And I'm also coming from the point of view of the phone calls we get, and where, you know, we get these uses, and it's like, oh man, that, this doesn't fit in there very good. Here's an opportunity to improve it. Yeah, I, I don't know there's any, I don't think we would add any value by relooking at it again, but you, but you would, because you've got a couple of years now, looking at applications, and so. That, that would be my, my suggestion, would be that staff comes back with us with some suggestions, and we look at those suggestions and say, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have another question. Why can't we just get rid of, why can't we just get rid of the old ones?
Because people's land is zoned that way.
Well, but they could say grandfathered in until they go to rezon or whatever, and then they have to go to the new one.
Because grandfathering in is not Plan A, that's Plan F.
But you have to leave.
You don't want to.
You have to leave the zones on the table.
We, we.
Longest ground.
We have to change it, and we could go through that process and change their zone, but that's.
It might be a fight.
To why? I'll go back to Browning, why would you change Browning?
So everybody that comes in now, their only options are the new ones?
No. Because at ArmorMax, well, the Yaggy ground, we did commercial highway, the old zone.
See, but I would say that's a down zoning, he went from a light manufacturing zone down to just commercial highway uses, he took uses off, more intense uses. On the northern two-thirds.
But the zoning kind of depends on what they're wanting to do with the ground also.
So now we have a lot of options for people. So where our future land use says commercial, take your pick, which one would you like?
But our future land doesn't say commercial, it's, it's too specific, is what I'm trying to get at. We need to bring it up to a higher level, and just say, commercial.
Our future land use says commercial.
No, it, it has.
It has commercial, it has business parks.
It has business parks.
Right, but business park was our way, just like.
Right, but business park was our way, just like town center, it was our, our way.
Right, I'm just saying all commercial.
We were trying to direct them towards business park zone.
But it should just be, I think, more commercial now.
And I agree, but there's nothing we can do about it.
We can change the future land use map, yeah.
Until, we can't, until we open, open this thing back up.
Yeah.
We can't request.
Maybe when we do the general plan, we can update.
I mean, really, we only have business park, commercial, town center, business park, commercial, yeah. But we only have.
A few.
For you anyway.
Business park and commercial. And you were, you, you came in right when we were writing the town center zone, right?
Before.
That was before and right, and everyone went back and forth what we were going to call it, but it really, and it ended up being town center. Business park is the same way, right?
You see, there's just general commercial there, we weren't specific in Croydon.
What does it say, general commercial?
But Croydon was more the industrial.
Oh, and that was industrial?
Industrial.
So we don't have a lot on here.
No.
Now, most of the county is natural resources, which is appropriate.
We should take a close look at.
What's that red blue?
Peterson industrial.
Is this?
Yeah.
But the Peterson was because of Rex Jensen.
Yeah, it's this machine shop.
Yeah. So that, that was the whole issue with a lot of it was to not make someone be.
For the bastard children.
Nonconforming.
Right.
You know, that was previously there, so we had a whole bunch of issues and it's a can of worms, whatever you do.
I mean, it works right now, you just want to take a look and make sure, see if we can tidy it.
It's just, it's just to look through it, does it make sense?
I think, I think that's good, but again, my, my suggestion would be that you, that you give us examples of what you think would change rather than asking us. Because I don't know that I could come up with anything creative anywhere. Although I might get rid of RV parks, that, that kind of surprised me and commercial highway, is it?
Yeah, there's RV parks and commercial highway, yeah.
But that's, that's an example, that, that raised my eyebrow when we with the armor, armor max reason.
What was that going to do? I had a group, not just Gary.
I'd be sure if you have some suggestions that you think would be beneficial to the county. You know, if there's just something.
This is just based on what we see daily.
Just give us something to look at.
You're seeing what's out there, what people are coming in, and then if we need to adapt.
I do have a question, like you talk banquet halls and it's conditional, you're thinking more permitted. What about parking? There's nothing, if you're going to do a banquet hall, should so much parking be required for that banquet hall? So should that be a condition or?
We have rules for that in the zoning part.
For commercial uses?
Yeah. Off street parking requirements.
Is it based on square footage of the commercial?
Use and square footage, depends on that. So we have a specific standard there, we don't need to make it a condition, they already have the standard.
We have one for residential, too.
Right.
If you have.
Yeah.
You have a home use that too many people park at. Any, any other comments on planning commission, you guys think we should, is that a good idea?
I agree with you, Gary.
The things I came up with, let me throw this in, is there, and I know there is in definition, but between CS and GC, it doesn't look like there's any realistic difference in the permitted uses. And then also for like technical, professional technical park, whatever it was. Cooking schools, barber beauty schools, that type of thing. And a lot of times those overlap with like catering businesses or beauty shops.
Maybe pick a zone that more the service professional is different than restaurants?
Or we could expand, you know, like caterers could be allowed in TPC if it's associated with a culinary school or, or something of the like. Because technically, because that was supposed to be a trade school or a college education, that type of thing.
It was supposed to be commercial highway converted to technical professional campus, that's, that's kind, that's how we got there, but.
And I mean, this is just for discussion and next time, next time.
Yeah.
So if there was a, a cosmetology school on the TPC, if they did business, would they have to come in for a permit? Or would it just be permitted because it's part of the college? So cosmetology and they offer services, like a salon service for their students? Well, students do other people's hair or whatever. Does the college have to come in and get a permit for that salon? Or is it just permitted because of it?
I would say it'd be accessory.
Accessory use.
Isn't that kind of what you're talking about, Chris?
Yeah, yeah, so, but it's, I mean, it's so common that you see something like this, I think we, you know, so like cosmetology, what she's talking about is not permitted in TPC. But should it be because it's really a school that's offering services? Because I mean, somebody has to practice on hair or nails or whatever. In catering, somebody has to practice on, you have to have clients. So it's a school, but it's providing a service too.
Well, but see, I would say that in that example, that that the primary purpose is school. They have some other incidental things. And that's the other part is we don't want to be so strict, you know, you have a business park and the business is there. But we still want to have a sandwich, sandwich shop as a possibility or.
But that goes back to that one thing, I can't remember what it was called, the nightmare. Is it was, it was doing that. It was making everything, if I remember right, really specific on what was allowed. And it didn't give any flexibility to fit the situation we was on. And so that's what our nightmare was, was trying to find the middle ground with it.
And it's hard to do.
Yeah, well, it took us two years and what did we get?
We learned a lot, no, seriously, I was going to say the same thing. Worst case out of this discussion is that we're all going to learn more about planning and zoning.
All right. How could that be a bad thing?
I just, every part of me doesn't want to talk about this ever again. I appreciate your time, that's, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that and those uses and just kind of do that, just to double check.
Okay.
And any thoughts or comments or whatever you want to call it, it's great.
I have an unrelated question, but in the use district or the use table, I have always had a question about forestry district. What is the acreage on that? Do you know, I've, I've heard the numbers.
One sixty.
What is it?
Yeah, I think it was.
Hundred and sixty eight.
It was the one sixty.
Except for cabins, you needed three twenty.
So which one, because that's the same argument or same discussion I've heard before, which, if we put a definition on it, or are we good with one sixty? Is that what's accepted, one sixty?
But not to throw a wrench in it, but there's the one state law that kind of vetoed all that, so.
Hundred acres?
Hundred acres, so.
That's why we did ninety nine.
So is there a definition for F one, is that?
The code says one sixty, but it's specific for three twenty, you need three hundred and twenty acres if you want a cabin. Unless we write a cabin ordinance.
Sorry, the code says a quarter section.
Hundred sixty, yes, quarter section, not a hundred sixty.
Thank you.
The area is the same.
A quarter section, that's the answer?
Yes.
What does that even mean?
That's a hundred and sixty acres. I think it was on, and I think Debbie explained it to me this way, it was just that the areas out there are more, they're still in their township range and sections. And so it's easier to look at as a quarter section then. You're finding a hundred and fifty acre parcel. I, I don't know, it's kind of funny.
So final answer is a hundred and sixty?
Except for cabin.
Except for cabin, unless you went to the state and put it a hundred. I know, it's confusing. So anything else on that, are we, that's what we're going to do, you're going to come back with, with ideas? Suggestions? Sounds good? Okay, should we go on to item number nine then? Any other business?
Just wanted to let you know that we've, I should say Haley is taking your direction on the rezone of the properties north of Old Highway. The smaller one acre, intu-ing the properties. Put together the map of them, got a list of the property owners and we've sent them all a notice that says. The planning commission has requested that staff initiate a rezoning on their property. Please contact us if you have any questions. You know, we checked with the accessory to see that they were, there would be no negative impact on them, they wouldn't be taxed more differently if the zoning changed. And so, but we want to reach out to them first, give them a chance to give back to us with questions. And then we will actually send notice to the thousand square feet or thousand feet around those properties. We had talked about a small section between Hidden Hills and, in hollow, excuse me, in hollow and, and Morgan City. But when we looked at the map, there was another section that's very similar, just on the other side of Hidden Hollow. Thought, well, let's add those in too. And so that's who we're looking at and we'll be back with that probably in June, the last meeting in June.
So when we advertise this for public hearing, since we were room ended at the meeting, it's really important that we clearly say what we're going to do. Because we could, I think we could very easily miscommunicate, hey, we're rezoning all this land to RR one, when really we're just clipping the back, backyards.
They tried to word it that way, but.
It's going to be hard to word it that way without people getting confused that we're doing a rezone, rezoning a bunch of land, I don't know.
We will, my thought on that was we'll actually probably list the, that these parcels will be zoned in the entirety to RR one. And list all the parcels rather than having the legal description and having to survey each back half as it sits. And so that it would be, we're changing, we really would be changing half the lot, but the back half would change with that overall. But we're letting the property owners know, then we'll let the neighbors know and have the meeting.
Yeah, I can't imagine they would be, I mean, they'll have questions, but.
Well, I, you get those, that's all good county that says you're rezoning my property, what, why? And I think once everybody understands it, they'll go, oh, great, this is good. But we deal with it every day and they don't, so notify them to be able to answer questions. Wanted to let you know, you guys might get calls from the planning commission.
But it's all this is because someone's in the MU one sixty, isn't it, or whatever?
Hard with their lots or in MU one sixty.
Yeah, so it's just putting them into the RR one zone and.
It's almost like there was an error.
Yeah.
The way, the way the map got drawn. But it does go back to what, three hundred feet or whatever it is?
Two hundred.
Two hundred feet. Okay.
But just back where that's going.
So just one question with it, even though say someone has three acres right there, they're only going to be, I mean, some of it would still stay in MU one sixty if you get beyond that two hundred foot, wouldn't you? Or is there none of them in that way?
That's the way it is today. Most of those lots are an acre, two acre, there's one that was like seven.
Maybe show the map?
Well, but even that, so you can't, are you going to put all of it into RR one's zone or will it be like maybe eight twenty or something?
RR one. But they're limited on frontage.
Well, but most of them are the mountain side anyway, so it's, it's non-buildable regardless what it's owned.
So here's the map. So there is, like, this is, this is a larger parcel and only the front is back. But the rest of it does not conform to the MU one sixty at all. So I don't know if you can see that.
That's one parcel or?
Who's?
Who's is that one?
I don't know. But this is, this is all one parcel, kind of comes out, wraps behind above the canal.
Yeah, that is big, that's.
That's big, that's.
Well, but we kind of looked at it and they really would not be able to do any more than they could do right now. This, this is all very steep back here, so they'd still only be able to do.
Can you make it bigger at all? I'm curious where's that?
It's studded.
Well, no, so this is Hidden Hills right there, Hidden Hollow, I mean.
In hollow.
Okay, keep going.
So, you know, the back half of this lot is MU one sixty, why would that be?
Because that one's up in Hidden Hollow there, right?
Well, it's actually Patterson subdivision.
Yeah, but isn't that Hidden Hollow?
Yeah.
Yep.
No, Patterson subdivision goes back.
Oh, Patterson's is off to the left.
That little row.
The first one in Hidden Hollow come into, huh?
Yeah, the slide was right up around eighteen and nine, seventeen.
So it's just these few lots here that it's really a leftover piece and it just. It makes it difficult to develop and use these properties because they've got this super restricted zoning on the back half of their lots. They're not anywhere near performance to the MU one sixty, I mean, the laws.
Was that?
Seven acres.
Is that one big parcel then? I can't. It has a lot of frontage or not?
See, it's probably Ron Robinson's.
Is that, hmm.
That's whose that is. Don't you think?
It's pretty, it's pretty steep.
Well, it's all that hillside, it's Ron's, it's got to be. Because he's up on there and then it goes up.
Right.
So you got the.
It's maybe looks like it.
You got the, you got the one house up, I know it's a steve still living it.
Yeah.
And then you go up above it to the right, that's where Ron's is, and so I'll bet you all that's his.
So that piece is ten acres.
But it's all hillside.
A lot of hillside.
Would that rezone allow them to subdivide more? I mean, you have how much frontage, I guess it.
They have about five hundred and forty feet of frontage.
And so adding more would allow them to probably put some more?
I didn't think so, I don't think so, I think.
There was enough in the RR one before?
Yeah, even if they put a road in, if they took a road back into the middle here, they would still, because of the amount of frontage and acreage, it really, maybe they could get three lots instead of two.
Something's not right.
Yeah, I'm.
But it's not right.
So, yeah, because that's not Stoddard Lane coming down there.
Yeah.
That is.
That is there.
Stoddard Lane.
Yeah, and that's better, so then you go straight across and you go up into Ron's, then you come around.
But that big five hundred, or the ten acre parcel, that's not Ron's?
It's not Ron's.
It'd have to be, because his house has got to be up to the right.
It's Ashley Wright.
But isn't the, isn't it connected to fourteen ninety?
Who is it?
It's Ashley Wright.
That owns it?
It's listed on the property ownership.
Does she have a home there?
Apparently, looks like it.
Are we talking about the fourteen ninety?
Fourteen ninety, right.
Which is the fourteen ninety?
It's, you know, on the road where there's that big section of frontage?
Yeah.
Old Hill, eighteen ninety.
So is there a home right there?
Yeah, on that ten acres.
On that one?
Right here, you can't see it very good, but it's right in there.
Or if that's the old tag or.
Oh, who did you say owns it?
Ashley Wright.
I was thinking Chaney.
Chaney's up further.
Ashley Wright.
Because it, right there is where the old, just past that's where the Stoddard Inn is.
See?
About right there.
That says Ashley Wright, that's the parcel.
Yeah, so.
On X, it's more accurate.
Probably Stoddard Inn.
On X, it's a hunting app, it's. On X, it's Hunting End. It's more accurate.
Oh, is it what she's using?
I cannot accept that.
What?
I told him it was more accurate than our county. It's very, it's pretty, it's, it's an exact replica of our county records.
What is it? Was it?
On X, it's a Hunting End. Do you know who's property you own?
It uses the same database as ArcGIS.
Yeah.
On X, like a stone?
O-N-X.
Oh, O-N-X.
He saved. Not the first one, it's just the last one.
ArcGIS.
It's pretty handy then.
Our parcel map's really cumbersome.
It is. This is easy. You just go right there and see it.
So explain to me Lance, it's probably dense, but what is it you gain by doing this in a, in the professional office?
We removed the nonconforming, but there's a lot in two zones. The back half of it does not, I mean, they, let's say they're two hundred and, three hundred feet wide at the rear. And that, they can't use that property at all when it's on MU one sixty and they have to meet sixty foot setbacks. Just, it's unnecessarily restricted and, and it's inconsistent with the existing lot. So what, what this is making the lot consistent with our zoning district. And it, it really does fall in the category of tightening it up.
And are you just following the county roads with, are you, this is not the only area you're doing it countywide?
No, no, no. This is the only area. This is the only area where you don't have such a, a big transition. You have a one acre lot that says MU one sixty, a hundred and sixty acre zone. It's very inconsistent.
Thank you.
The other areas, we have all, we would be rezoning the entire county if we didn't have lots that are RR1 and A twenty. We allow the lots to be in two zones. That doesn't seem, the uses are very consistent. The setbacks restrictions are very consistent and similar. Accessory buildings in A twenty and RR1, it's a ten foot rear and side setback. Doesn't change anything, so that's good. Here, it changes from a ten foot side setback to sixty. Because that setback is anticipating a hundred and sixty acre parcel moving it back in. It's just inconsistent with this, these lots along here.
Thank you.
So we'll have more discussion when you bring it back to us and. Any other business issues? I have a question about our meeting. So the county council next week is going to go to social distancing, six foot chairs. They just spreading their chair out a little more than we are?
No, they.
Just kind of like that.
They are, but I think they're referring that to the public. We will count, like the direction that they discussed was counting the number of people in the room. If people are lining up outside, they will have markers so they're separated six feet. All that kind of thing.
So do we want to continue? This is for, for all of you guys. Do you want to continue doing what we're doing or do we want to bear?
Let the public come.
Well, typically you don't have a hard time with social distancing in our meetings.
Normally.
The only issue is when we come to a controversial subject and having room in the, enough room and space for safety, social distancing and the applicant and all the concerned citizens potentially. I don't see that coming up. I don't see any big issues on the rise. CW land would be the next good one.
Which one?
CW land.
Oh, they're going to come back with this.
Yeah, they're, they're going to come back. But well, actually they go to council, so that's the table back. So postpone.
Same thing with frontier states? Which one's frontier?
Smith.
Trappers?
Trappers that we denied.
So that hasn't gone to the council yet?
They're still, it's gone to the council and they postponed it. They, the applicant requested to postpone, so they can address some of the issues a little better. They're getting close on the island water system and the pump house being in place and let's just get that done and then we can, cause I think they're mentality. Let's, let's get that issue off the table.
So are we okay doing things the way we're doing things or should we just go to the same social distancing measure? That's the question. Same, same as the county council or?
I don't have a problem going to county council. I don't, I very rarely get anyone here.
It is.
Yes. I'd like to keep going again, but. I thought it was, I thought it worked well.
I was liking it.
I mean, if they're going to put, you know, tape on the floor and go through and basically develop the process, we might as well just use that process.
Have the chairs in here separate six.
Yeah.
By now, everybody's pretty accustomed to it.
Yep.
We typically only have one or two, so.
You'll make Tina's day.
We just put two rooms, just put two chairs up. That's it. What'd you say?
I just said you'll make Tina's day.
Yeah, well, two chairs, right? Probably have to sit outside or roll them all. Okay, I don't have any, any other questions first off? No? Did you guys get your, did you get everybody's foot already?
Yeah.
Got mine, right?
Yep.
Okay, if there's no other questions on ten, take a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes.
Hi, second.
And all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, that is so quickly, doesn't it?
Cut the camera. Oh, it just moved. It didn't turn around, but it did move.
Thanks, everyone.
Just zooming in on you. Just zooming in on you.
Oh, it just changed, it just turned again. That's creepy.
So the code word is just, what's the name of, what we were using for town?